Good morning, and I'd like to officially call to order the Potter County Commissioners' Court, June 9, 2014. Let the record note those in attendance, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Hortia, Judge Ware, Commissioner Church, and Commissioner Vaughn. I invite you to please stand as Julie leads us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Karen, I'd like to say thank you so much for the stay together. Thank you for the opportunity to gather as a county. Daryl, we just thank you so very, very much for the rain, Lord. Things will be greener, and hopefully the fire danger and everything will be on board. We just ask that you continue to bless us in this manner. Daryl, we just ask that you be with the Commissioners this morning as they make important decisions for the county. Ask that you be with the first responders, Lord, as they go out and do the things that they're called to do. We just thank you for the stay. We ask that you be with us throughout the week. It's an encyclical prayer. Amen.
American flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state under God, one individual. Item number one, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from May 27, 2014, Potter County Commissioners' Court. I have a motion from Judge Ware to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Yes.
And a second by Commissioner Church. All those in favor, show of hands. The opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number two, vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval, the payment of vouchers processed by the County Auditor's Office, May 21, 2014 through June 3, 2014. Let the record note check numbers 155-838 through 156-120, and wire number 386 through 389, the amount of $1,856, $856.888.89. Let me entertain the motion.
I move we approve the vouchers as presented.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church, and a second from Judge Ware. There any questions for the court? Very none. All those in favor, show of hands. The opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number three, insurance report. To recognize the insurance report. Kay, do you have anything to present to the Commissioners' Court this morning?
No, ma'am.
Any questions for the court? Very none, so recognized. Item number four, Potter County projects. To hear a report on various Potter County projects and take necessary action. Mike, good morning.
I have presented you with the copy of the report, so I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Michael, will you, I guess, at night of the day, see any correspondence at all, or the last day, or if there is any incident, as it will be for the community.
And a follow-up question, did we hear anything back in reference to Jurniman?
No.
Is there a timeline for that?
Frankly, I don't really know. Procedurally, the case right now, if we intervene, there's an appeal. Early on, the Jurniman had asked to go to arbitration, and the judge ruled against them, and they took that issue up on appeal, and they are still waiting for the court appeals to rule on that question. So it's kind of the case right now, it sort of stands to that rule comes down. And then if the judge pulls the order to trial court, the case will move on, and if the judge says reverses, if the court appeals reverses it, then it'll go to arbitration. I assume we probably, I don't know if we'd go with him or not, because we don't have to be obligated to arbitrate it. But that's where we are right now. We're kind of waiting to see what happens with that.
Mike, is there any update on the Bushland Fire Station, the emergency project?
We, they have had a purchase order issued to the contractor. I tried to make contact with them late last Friday afternoon. I was unable to call them since we're finished with this meeting, to see where we're ready to begin the project start.
And then just one more question in terms of timeline for the XL Energy Retro Commissioning Program, as well as the rebate program. I do see documentation that we're awaiting response. What's the typical timeline for that?
Never been through this. I visited with XL last week on the retro commissioning project. We were waiting for them to review all the documentation and the pictures I sent in on the buildings. In turn, I'll be waiting on our agents, who we're hoping to be the routing consultants here, hopefully the engineers, then we'll be able to go through and study them. They will take that information, drive it back to the Weldon Company and XL, and then they will present to us on, I guess, right now, probably, I'd say probably even mid-summer, mid- or summer, hopefully to hear back on that. The, the Weldon, I mean, the energy efficiency on the rebate, I had a meeting with them last week on the floor to finalize all details. We're just waiting on them to include everything and present any type of rebate there.
Any other questions for the court?
Easy thing to note, this is a query on the baseball complex. If you can discuss your.
Are there any need for that? Thank you, Mike. Project updates are recognized. Item number five, time clock plus. To hear a report on the time clock plus and take any action necessary. Kay?
Good morning. As you all are aware, thus far, HR, IT, Auditor's Office, purchasing, and collections have all been implemented and are all working well. Implementation information has been received back from Treasurer's Office and has been loaded into the system. I anticipate staging Treasurer with the next tier that comes on, rather than implement them separately. The preparatory information, or the background information, has been provided and put together by HR for elections and the tax assessor collector's office. I anticipate dissemination to those departments next, or this week, by the end of the week. And then the actual implementation for that group will be dependent upon how quickly we get the information back from the department heads and their availability for training. But as soon as we can get that information back, get it loaded into the system, and get those departments trained, we will bring on that third stage. We had originally planned to implement jury, the jury section, with that stage three implementation. However, there's been a retirement of the key employee in that department, and apparently we've just requested that we back that one off just a little bit until the replacement, until the dust can settle on that retirement and the replacement of that key employee in that department. Stage four of the implementation is anticipated to include clerkage management, county clerk and district clerk. And stage four will be implemented as soon as practical, after we can finalize stage three and make sure that it's flowing properly.
Kay, did I hear stage three correctly? Elections, the tax office, and treasurer. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of the documentation that you provide back to the departments, do you give them a timeline to have that completed by?
We give them an anticipated date of implementation and ask for benefit balances as of that key date. And then they provide back the information to us, and we have to load each individual in separately with those benefit balances and set up all the users according to the requirements that that department has given us for accessibility and such.
And the anticipated date for this tier three is what I jotted down, but what is that, that will be provided to that departments?
I will use the end of this month as of June 30.
Okay.
And hope to have it, have them implemented by July 1st, or that first week in July. Of course, it is dependent upon when we receive that information back. Okay? Do you think when we do this, right? Any questions?
Is this a voluntary program by departments?
It's expected for departments that report to the Commissioners' Court to come on board. Those that are headed by elected officials in court and appointed departments are not mandatory, of course.
Yeah, and what I would add to that comment, Commissioner, is when the court approved the purchase during budget session, if I remember correctly, the idea was to really provide a platform county-wide, because it is replacing a manual timekeeping system. So really, in terms of being proactive for documentation, not only of approvals, but actual work time, at least that was the intent at that time. So I would certainly like to think that most elected officials would see this as a benefit to their department.
And we did have a good response from departments, all departments across the county, when we had originally discussed implementation, as we had many departments headed by elected officials that had agreed to come on. Some of the smaller departments and some of the courts had opted either to come on later or come wait and see, but we had a good response.
That comes to your office and you get a demonstration of that, of course.
Certainly. Certainly.
I haven't seen it, so.
Okay. Just let me know when.
Any other questions for the court? Thank you for the opening, Julie. Item number six, amended resolution victim assistance program. To consider and act upon the amended resolution designating Judge Ware as the grantee's authorized official, as stated in paragraph four, to be submitted to the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, and for the continuation of the victim assistance program of Potter County.
Good morning. Good morning. This is an added paragraph by my grant manager and my husband, and we never really had to designate that specifically before, although Judge Ware is designated on my grant application. So she asked me if I would just add that paragraph to the agenda.
Kay, any concerns in reference to the amended resolution?
No, no problem.
Okay. And yearly, this continues to come before the Commissioners' Court, is that right? Before we do the date, and that will continue to do so?
Yes, it's an annual grant.
Okay.
And this is one that's pending, and it's not been approved yet. This is the one for the year 2015. Judge Ware's been on my grant for the last 10 years, and there's never been any problem with having him on there. But of course, changes happen, and they want to specifically put him on my resolution.
On the resolution. So it's just added language that mirrors what is on the other documents? Is that right?
Yes.
I move that our tenant Commissioners' Court approve the amended resolution for the Victim Crimes Act.
Kay, I have a motion from Commissioner Church, and a second from Commissioner Vaughn. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number seven, Union Pacific Distribution Services memorandum of understanding to hear a presentation from Union Pacific regarding a proposed distribution facility in support of the wind energy projects, and to consider and act upon a memorandum of understanding for maintenance of a portion of Lakeside Drive. Hi, would you mind stating your name for the record, please?
My name is Doug Graham, Senior Director, Union Pacific Distribution Services, in Omaha, Nebraska. And this morning, I've got a short presentation I'd like to show, as well as a video of an exciting new project that we're going to embark upon here in the next, hopefully, 30 days, out at the Asarco facility. And in doing so, we're going to need access to Lakeside Drive, and so that's the reason for the memorandum of understanding, where Union Pacific will maintain the right-of-way next to where we have access. So if I can, I'll just take a few of these slides.
Thank you.
So about a year ago, we identified, based off of the needs in this area, to develop a wind distribution center. I'll take you through what that is, so we don't know what that means. But for the last nine years, Union Pacific has been the leader in the transportation and distribution of large wind turbine components throughout the United States and basically North America. And so we have 40 of these wind distribution centers all over the United States and Canada. And what we would like to do is establish one here, and I'll tell you why as I go through this. So we have a product called Wind to Rail, which is a combination of Union Pacific Railroad Services and Union Pacific Distribution Services, where we go to our customers, mainly the OEMs, the manufacturers of the wind turbines, and sell them a product that consists of transportation and logistics support. And so we come up with a total solution. So our product, and we go from the bottom up, deals with rail equipment, distribution centers, and then an integrated communication system to provide the customers with all the needed data for these type of boot. So we provide them with rail cars, we provide the customer with fixturing to hold the components to the rail cars, distribution centers, but I'll take you through in a minute, and then just a logistics proactive approach to communicating all of that data that's needed for shipments and movement of these trains. So this is kind of a picture here, on slide 44, where it gives you an idea of what Wind to Rail is. So these components are either imported from other countries or manufactured here in the United States. We provide to either the ports of the plants, and then those trains move loaded to a distribution center where they're very close to the wind farms. Components offloaded and then trucked to the wind farms as needed for the various projects. This area is very, very, where are wind turbines. This is a big wind state, right? Texas is the largest wind state. These are the various types of components that are out there, will be moving on the trains and into our distribution center. We've been doing this, like I said, for a number of years, just to give you an idea of kind of the volumes of unit trains that began on an annual basis, and the amount of projects, just to give you a little data and history behind what we've been doing. Why Amarillo? Well, the big reason is the CRES line. If you notice, over the last few years, there's been probably less erection and development of wind turbines due to the ability of not being able to take electricity to the grid. And over the last few years, and about $7 billion worth of money, CRES line has been developed, and now there's another way to get the juice to the major markets in Texas like Houston, Dallas, Austin, and so on and so forth. So with the CRES line, you're going to see a resurgence in the amount of wind projects that are here. For example, this is just the first quarter of 2014, and you can see from this is that, and I apologize for the quality of the picture here, but Texas by far has already 5 billion, excuse me, 5,000 megawatts of wind construction going on. So Texas will again appear to be the leader for the next few years, with Iowa following behind. So again, the reason why is for the demand. There's still a lot of demand for renewable energy, and so by having all of these wind projects and the new CRES line, it allows the juice to get to the consumer. I talked about how many distribution centers we have. This is a map that shows those. Where the Union Pacific Shield is, is a distribution center that has either been operated or is operating at this time. And then you see that we're going to add our newest version to that, will be Amarillo. We're excited about this. This is a great opportunity for us to participate in this market. We've usually penetrated this market from Livo, Kansas, or from Abilene, but now we're going to be right in the center of where all the projects are for the next couple of years. So this photo will give you just an idea of some of the major, larger projects that are headed the Amarillo way, and that we'll be participating in some of these. Another example here is another photograph of where the components originate from. So some of these are ports, some of these are plants, domestic plants. But you can see, you have the opportunity by Union Pacific to rail from each one of these various plants or ports into the Amarillo area. Again, some more projects, just to give you a better idea, within 70 miles or so of Amarillo, lots of big projects going on, so we'll be participating in those. Some timelines of some of the projects. General Electric has a project, a couple of projects going on right now, and then there's some other projects right behind that, just kind of gives you a timeline, about the middle, or the first quarter, excuse me, of 2015. It will probably last way into 15, and depending on the tax credits, and if they're extended, it could be into 16 and beyond. So this gives you an example of what the wind distribution center will look like. These are, this was shot at our facility in Tucson, Arizona. Trying to pick a desert-type area to give you an example of it, but there'll be cranes, land that will be prepped behind Asarco's facility up on the north side of town, and we'll have power components, blades, the cells, hubs, all coming in by unit train by rail. Here's the location of the distribution center and the amount of track access that we have, so very good infrastructure already in place. Unit trains will come from various origins, and it can go right into this facility, be broken apart, and then we can unload them, and then those trains, empty trains will leave, loaded trains, board-loaded trains will come in. Just a little more deeper look at the facility. Here's the actual construction view of the facility. We're going to start off with 12 acres of developed facility. Just a little different view of that. We have the ability to expand up to 35 acres. The construction of this facility should start, well, actually, today we have some things going on, but the main construction should start in the next week or so. We're hiring locally, we have a local firm, Fuller and Sons, that will be doing the development. You're looking at close to $1 million worth of construction to do the 12 acres. So that's it, kind of, for my presentation. I have a video that I'd like to show you, gives you a little better, it's about four and a half minutes, gives you a little better view of it from, instead of being slides, you can kind of get a flavor that way.
Mr. Graham, how many employees additional do you think we need to be adding to the workforce here?
It's going to vary from time to time. The companies that we employ to do the unloading of the wind components and the reloading onto trucks will come into the community and try to hire. I would think that we will probably have a staff of about eight to 10 folks out there at all times for the next year and a half or so. Could be more. We'll also be looking at hiring security, and of course, we employ a lot of different services that will be needed out there, from Johnny's on the spot to cleaning services, multiple other type of water and other things like that that we'll need for our employees to do their job. So local employees, not sure how many will be from the local area. We hope that there will be a lot. You have to be fairly qualified to handle either the cranes and the rigging. The companies that we employ have to be certified by our customers, and so there's a limited amount of companies that will be, that are able to do that work.
The size of those turbines, I mean, this here is three different sizes, depending on the sections, does that depend upon the geographical location of the area, or how is that designed as far as where those underneath, those categorically going to be placed?
You know, that's up really to the developers of the wind project. They, when they come in to develop a wind farm, there's usually a study done, and that study can take, you know, from a year to two years, the longer the better. They're looking at different altitudes, they're looking at is, how consistent the wind is. Obviously, they're calculating that to determine a return on their investment. There's various sizes, the sizes are getting larger, but it varies from project to project. I can tell you that the turbines, the turbines that will be coming will be of the larger sizes, right? Because they are much more efficient and much more effective in capturing wind and generating electricity at this speed.
And so the distribution center that you're speaking to, really kind of creating, I'm assuming from the developer's side, well, I have a question and a statement all in one, is what pique this interest to potentially have this in Amarillo? And I certainly see the graphical images of that, but if I'm a developer and really interested in inventory on hand and being able to readily get that to my project, is that part of where this is coming from as well?
Sure. Oh, yeah. You know, there's just so many projects that are going to be happening in this area that the OEMs, as well as the developers, need a forward distribution center. They need to be able to get their product close to the farms, you know, so that they can then pull from that inventory to build the, to build their projects and wreck their turbines. And so the idea, I mean, there, there will be, you will probably be approached by, part Karen, the approach, because we're going to be the only distribution center in part of the country, but the state will be approached by a number of other companies that are looking at building other distribution centers in the area, like Lubbock and below Plainview, some of those places like that, because the demand is so hot, and there's just not enough trucks to handle the amount of wind components from either the ports or the plants. And so our customers came to us last year when they said, okay, the CRES line is being finished up, it's going to be commissioned soon, we need a solution to forward these components into the marketplace. We came to Amarillo, struck a deal with our friends at Asarco, and have been working on this since about July of last year. I approached Mr. Kemp back in October, and talked to him about this, as well as Roger and the guys from the road and bridge crew about getting access onto the road, and talked to them, and so we've come up with this memo of understanding. I hope that answers your question.
And a follow-up question to that, and you spoke to that just briefly, is Asarco input and their kind of pulse on this project?
Well, they're very excited about it. You know, they're a community-based company. They, they want to provide some economic benefit to the, to the, to the area. That's their big pull. The other part is they want to be green, right? And so that was the reason why they are allowing us to lease this property for the next five years.
So the property will be leased from Asarco?
Yes.
Okay.
It's leased by Union Pacific Distribution Services.
And an additional question, if I understood the presentation correctly, it will be a combination of rail and truck to get the actual inventory here? And this mostly rail, is that right?
Yes, yes, correct. There could be some components that are trucked in, but the majority of it, the idea behind it is a railroad subsidiary, is that we'd like it to run on the railroad, so, yes.
And so the speed of that rail, is there any, any changes in terms of the speed of the rail and what it is they're carrying on that? Will it take longer for that inventory to kind of go through the city and get at the actual location? Or what I'm anticipating is if we hear any Or what I'm anticipating is if we hear any community input that the rails are taking longer, you know, that kind of thing, to go through the system, if you will?
No, I don't believe so. The way that the system is set up, depending on which way the trains come in, and they can come in from a couple of different directions, it should not affect the capacity or the velocity of the trains here in this market.
Are there times when these trains would plan, like, come in at like 2:00, 3:00 in the morning when there's not very little traffic? Do we have any options there or do they just come in when they're ready to come in?
They, they will come as, as they are loaded and released from the origin. Transit times are anywhere from the west coast, couple of days from Lake Long Beach into here, from Houston, a couple of days, and a day from Colorado.
I just want to help that our citizens are going to be interrupted in their day of duties because of the addition of trains.
You think that will be minimal pressure?
Let, let me just state that I'm really glad that you picked Amarillo and we're looking forward to having them here. I think there was some concern with the Sarco as far as would there be trucks leaving when they were changing shifts, but I think that all can be worked out with logistics of what, but that's not a real concern, I don't think.
We're on the backside of a Sarco's facility. It was actually the folks at Exxon or, or, XL.
XL.
So we met with XL. We talked to them about shift changes and things like that to talk about how we could minimize any interruption to their folks getting to work. I think they were more worried about getting to work than leaving. I don't understand that. But anyway, they, we talked about that. Now, there is access to the facility a couple of different ways, not just down Lakeside Drive. You can come in. Roger, what's the road you're on?
You can come in on Eastern Willow Creek and, from the loop, Eastern Willow Creek and then down.
So, you know, I passed a track that way. So there's just one great crossing there. And we, you know, we feel that we will interrupt service or highway, roadway service for, you know, anywhere from about 15 to 30 minutes, not all at one time, in chunks, as we bring the trains in and as we leave, as the trains leave. So a train comes in, takes about four days to unload, and then a train leaves, and then the next train will come in. So for an hour, 30 minutes on the origin, on the origination are coming in, and 30 minutes on the out, there could be some traffic that we would block, but not, again, not all at one time. That might be for 10 minutes and then we would open up, then another 10 minutes and so on and so forth. We're trying to do that during, we'd like to do that during the nighttime hours, right? And we'll try to do that. We also talked with the folks about, obviously, avoiding that switching or crossing the road during their, their shifts and have that information. It was, I think, 7:00 AM, 4:00 or again 6:00 PM, and then 11:00 PM, I believe is correct. But they're really the only ones down that road that have the suspension on the track.
This video is pretty impressive, I think it'd be great to see it. See it.
So we built this video just for folks like you guys because it's so hard to get your mind around the size of these things and what we're trying to do. So this, this should give you a good idea of what this is going to look like. So again, the trains come from ports or plants, and they're unit trains, and they can be mixed unit trains like this train. This has got hubs and blades and the cells on it, or they could be solid trains of tower sections or blades. These are just some examples of some of our distribution centers and the trains as they come in. So the trains arrive and then we, we go to work. We're moving the components off, give you kind of an idea of how we unload the trains here. So after they're here, could be for months or weeks or just a few days, the OEMs and the developers send in their trucks to start taking these to the wind farm. And so they will start loading, loading components out. It could be loading trucks out as well as unloading trains at the same time. And the trucks in the barn. Kind of interesting notes on these trucks, most of the rear axles of the trailer are steerable and they're steerable by remote control. And so the vehicle that is following behind it, the escrow vehicle behind it, has also got a remote control, like joystick in the inside the cab of the truck or barn. It can steer those rear axles, so it allows them to be able to turn in a very sharp, in a sharper way. So that car right there is steering the rear axles of that blade. Same thing here, it's just a different angle. That car is steering the rear of that.
is located locally, we would expect to see this traffic more often out in the community? And I feel like I know the answer to that, but certainly want to ask that question. Because today, I would say, we certainly have seen this type of behavior, but in my mind, certainly not to the magnitude of having a distribution center locally, well, it will become the norm. I feel like today is kind of the exception, or at least from my experience. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, because I would expect some community questions if it is slowing down traffic at large, not necessarily on the property itself.
Right. Well, yeah, it will increase the amount of traffic because these, this, these components got to get to, get to the wind farm. But based off of where we're located down and with the loop around town and where these wind farms are, which if you go back, and I can go back to one of the slides here, give you a little better idea. And that's the reason why I put this slide in, because I figured that would be a question. You can see that a lot of them are, you know, we're on the northeast side of town. So the, you know, the direction that you'll see a lot of these trucks go will be to the north and east as well, around the bypass, to the west or to the south. It depends on if we win these projects. We have not been awarded, we've been awarded the GE business, which is all the green line that goes to the north and east. We have been awarded the project called Route 66 or, I can't remember that, Route 66. And then Spitting Spur. Those are the only projects we've been awarded at this time. But yes, it will increase the amount of traffic. But the way these projects work, first off, most of these trucks like to leave very, very early in the morning. So they can leave 30 minutes before sunrise. We usually load the trucks in the afternoon and they leave. Usually one turbine per day goes out. So that would be three blades, three or four tower sections, and then cell and hub. And those trucks will usually leave very early in the morning, you know, it could be 5:00 AM in the morning or so, and then get out of the way. And you'll be surprised at how little they really actually disturb the community and the traffic, especially since you have bypass all around town. And that's the way these guys will try to go. They will not try to go downtown here, obviously, or even across the interstate border here. So they're going to, they're going to avoid downtown as much as possible in this area. So that's the beauty of being out at a Sarco. It's so far out that it really won't affect traffic that much.
So we can't expect to see runner poetry, would that be known?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You mentioned the press line. Can you help educate me on what that is?
It was a transmission line. So about, well, in the mid, mid 2000s, Texas was a boom for wind. And Texas has the most turbines of all the states in the United States. And it was a big boom and then they ran out of enough capacity on the transmission lines to take the energy to the, to the grid. And so for the last four years, I believe, for three or four years, they've been working on the press line and it's completed. And so now you've opened up a whole new capacity lane and these are going to, you know, this is going to Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, Austin, you know, it's going to the major Texas market grids. So that's the beauty of the press line. So now you're going to have this new boom again.
Sure, and utilities came and affected us there once we made the press line.
Interesting. So it's a, it's a new pathway to get it to the grid?
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, there were turbines that were erected and never commissioned until just recently because there was not enough capacity to take that energy to the grid.
Dave, I have a couple of questions on the memorandum of understanding, if I may. Page one of that document, section two, prior to the commencement of transport activities, the county and Union Pacific will jointly document pavement conditions of the roadway. I'm assuming that's our road and bridge division that will do that, but I wanted to confirm that?
Yes.
That was referenced by the county?
Yeah, I believe they've already had some communications.
Yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Just a minute.
Absolutely.
When you meet approached several months ago, so that's always my concern and is still my concern, the twisting and turning coming out on our roads. But it took us 20-some years to ever get Lakeside overlay and it is an excellent road right now. And with this traffic coming, turning in, once they get out going on a straight line, they're going to, per axle, they're probably going to be lighter than what's running on there now. But the twisting and turning coming out was what I was, I talked to David about it. David said, yeah, let's get some, be, and ride and get damaged in that area and they will take the repair.
And I do see that in the memorandum of understanding. It indicates that Union Pacific will assume all liability for damage to the roadway system caused by the overweight loads. That's the clause.
Well, overweight or long loads, however you want to put it.
Overdimensional.
Over, yeah, I don't think it's, like I said, per axle, it will be less than what they're running on there now.
Okay. And then Dave, on section three of that same page, it indicates that the county and Union Pacific will periodically monitor the pavement? Have we established that guideline if it will be every month, every quarter?
Well, we have, no, I guess we can establish at times, but we will watch it daily.
Sure.
Something you're going to have to watch. They're going to watch it, we will watch it.
We see something and jointly talk about it and get it repaired.
Hopefully, they won't tear up it. At this point, we don't know unless it's just protected by them.
So in other communities, we do the same thing. And so what we've done is, I mean, I can give you a number of city engineers with Brawley, Colorado, California, Napa, Idaho, where we did this exact same thing. And we videotaped the road before we started the project. We denoted all of the defects in the road before. And then after the project was over, we went back through and both in Brawley as well as in Napa, there was no damage to the road. So we're willing to stand up for this because we know that, you know, it could be some defects, but we're, we're fine with standing up and being behind our, our commitment to the community. We don't want to cause any grief to the community nor any cost. So we'll stand right behind it.
Okay. And is it fair to say that the distribution center will exist as long as there are projects that offset that? This is not, come to Amarillo and you will always stay in Amarillo concept. It is dependent on the projects that are you, that you are awarded. Am I saying that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. Dave, any questions from a legal perspective you'd like to inform the court on?
No, I think it's been, we, as he says, we've been talking about this on and off for several months and I, you know, I think that, you know, I'm perfectly happy with the memorandum of understanding. They've got a little kind of change as I recall, we're stranded, so, I mean, I think it's going to be great.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Potter County and the Union Pacific Distribution Services.
Second, for discussion, are there any other questions from the court before we close the matter? The votes.
How close is Iowa in second place? Not even close. They, they, actually Illinois has more turbines than the state of Iowa. The state of Iowa is coming along strong. They're, they're very pro, I, I tend to agree with that. Texas, Texas is leading, don't worry. Now, really blow, blow it up.
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Church and a second from Commissioner Morkia. All those in favor, show of hands. We oppose. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you and welcome to Amarillo. Item number eight, county assistance program. A, to hear a presentation on county assisted districts as allowed by chapter 387 of the Texas Local Government Code. B, to consider an act upon calling for an election to establish a county assisted district in the unincorporated areas of Potter County, which would collect an additional sales tax in the unincorporated area of the county not to exceed 2%. And Dave, I'm not sure who's speaking to this. I don't have anyone referenced on the agenda.
Thank you, sure.
Commissioner?
Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to talk about this with you all. The county assistance district, the sales tax is something that was brought forward, researched and then brought forward by, by the auditor's office, John and Kerry, to me and a few other folks. And so we've met on this a couple of times and come up with a proposal to, to present to you today. Of course, all of you understand that where most of our revenue comes from, for the county is through property taxes. And we're pretty much limited to that except for a few different little avenues that we can take. And this is one avenue that is available out there. So I want to talk to you a little bit about that. So let's start with the next slide. Why do we want to do this? Well, first of all, go ahead. Counties all around the state are facing the same challenges we are. And that is fund the services and projects and programs that we all need one. You do know too that the legislature limits how much property tax we can increase at any one year, at which level we can increase to. So there's a, there's a challenge to counties as to how they can try So there's a, there's a challenge to counties as to how they can try to bring in more revenue. Chapter three eighty-seven Local Government Code authorizes us as counties to create a county assistance district. And then within those districts, adopt, uh, sales tax levels to finance and support public services. Who's eligible? All counties in the states are eligible to, to create up to four different assistance districts within their county. How do you create a county assistance district? The commissioner's court, uh, us, uh, of the county, can call an election to create the assistance district and then impose, uh, a sales tax. Next. There are some limitations on how much the sales tax can, uh, can be increased. The sales tax within the proposed district may not exceed two percent. And we'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. In addition to these elements, the election code requires the election order must, number one, define the boundaries of the district. And two, call for the election to be held within those boundaries. So in other words, only the people who live within the boundaries of the, uh, assistance district get to vote whether or not they want the, want the district. Next. How can this tax revenue be used? And it is a sales tax, so it is tax revenue, so we have to be upfront about that. The provision of the services that benefit the public health or welfare, including provisions of firefighting and fire prevention services. That's number one. Number two, the provisions of law enforcement, detention services, the construction maintenance or improvement of roads and highways, the promotion of economic development, tourism. And lastly, the maintenance of or improvement of libraries, museums, parks, or other recreational facilities. So, uh, there are limits of what this money can be used for, and those are the, the five areas of, of use that we can use the funds for. What we're proposing is that we establish a county assistance district in Potter County. And that district would be all of the unincorporated parts of the county. And we'd also propose that this election would raise the sales tax from the current six point two-five percent in the unincorporated areas of county by two percent and move it up to the same level as a city, which is eight point two-five percent. This map gives you a somewhat an idea of the area that's involved, uh, where the city boundaries are, it's the red lines, and anything outside of those, uh, red lines are the unincorporated parts of, of the county. If we were to be successful in passing this county assistance district by voters, how much money would we expect to raise? And this figure comes from, uh, the comptroller, state comptroller's office. We'd estimate that we could, we could increase revenue by about five hundred thousand dollars. And that sales tax would just come from businesses outside of, uh, of the incorporated city. Now, how do we propose to utilize the revenue if we're successful? Uh, and we propose that it would be used to enhance the public safety mission. One, firefighting and fire prevention. And two, law enforcement. Why firefight, uh, the fire department? Well, I think we can all agree that over the years, this department has seen less than adequate budgets. The average age of their equipment is at least fifteen years. Our ISO rating, which is the insurance service organization, has, that rating has been lowered and as a result, higher fire insurance rates for citizens who live outside the city. And how this works, the ISO comes in and rates all fire departments, gives them a numerical rating. Then the underwriters of fire insurance, home fire insurance, uses those figures to determine what the rates of those, um, of the premiums would be. Now, any equipment that's over fifteen years of age gets a zero rating. So we're, uh, we're looking at several of our pieces of equipment that are not getting any points. So thus, our rating keeps getting lower. Better equipment, better response times will increase the ISO rating, thus lowering citizens' fire insurance rates. Some of the timeline we're looking at, uh, we're presenting this today in hopes we can get a resolution to say, yes, we'd like to take it to our citizens, let them vote on it. So we need to pass a resolution to do that. We'll define the county, uh, the boundaries of this district. What we're proposing is that the district be all unincorporated part of Potter County and then call for the election to be held within those boundaries. And the election would actually be held in November at the general election. August fifteenth is our last date when we can file this to be placed on the ballot. And September and October, propose that we go out and hold town hall meetings in those areas to educate our citizens about the importance of this, of this, uh, assistance district. And of course, November fourth would be the election. I might also say that, um, if this was approved, then we'd have to notify the folks at the state level, once this is all put into gear and educate those businesses that would be affected. We probably wouldn't see any funds until next summer. So, um, this is a kind of a long-term effort, but it's, uh, it's one that, uh, I think would, would be a real benefit to, to Potter County and help with the fire, uh, department to get them up to where they need to be.
And Commissioner, and Carrie, is this, the county assistant district, is this comparable to what Randall County is using, um, to supplement their fleet of fire? This is fire equipment?
Right. It's basically actually the same.
Okay.
They did the last general election to use, to use.
And so Commissioner, uh, to your point of the election would potentially be held in November, that implies to me that there would be no additional expense to put this item on the ballot, but I'm looking to Malin to confirm that as well.
That's correct. There will be no additional expense, it will be free balance, just a little more.
Okay. And for the record, because I, I know you weren't by the mic, and no additional expense is what Malin indicated. Um, Commissioner, do you think that it would be wise prior to action from the court to really holding these town hall meetings? I, I certainly like the strategy that you indicated. You gave the timeline of September and October to inform the unincorporated areas of the county. Do you think that it would be wise to hold the meeting and really get the pulse on the community before the court taking formal action?
Personally, no. Uh, I think that that's the purpose of the election, is to get their view, if they vote out, but we don't get it. But, uh, I think that's what we're doing is saying, okay, we wanna put it out to the people. You tell us now, is this all right?
I think, I think the commissioner's point is, uh, because we're on a sort of a tight timeline as far as moving towards the November election. I, you know, I don't see if there are any issues, uh, I don't really, I want to compliment, uh, Commissioner Church for doing research and moving forward aggressively and, uh, addressing issues certainly of our concern of updating our fleet, if you would. And, uh, this is, uh, an ideal way to do it, and the two percent that would be added would not level more than what we're already paying for the state of the city anyway. So I think that's a, that's a win-win for, for Potter County in that degree.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And as far as the town hall meetings, I think that's what you speak of, as far as could we do it, possibly earlier than that, or is that what you're, your concern is?
Earlier than the court adopting a formal resolution to authorize the election, to really kind of have our pulse on what the public opinion would be?
Let me ask, but then let's, let's talk at this full million, because, uh, certainly the expert is always ensuring that we get all of our ducks in the role, if you would, uh, particularly to ensure that that is on the November election. Is there something that, well, is there a deadline and, uh, you have to, to have and ensuring that that?
Well, obviously eighteen is the last one, but any time before then is fine too. We like all the advancements we can get, but we're fine with obviously eighteen.
Uh, I think that we might wanna go ahead and pass this and then let's work on the community, let them know, hey, this is why, while we pass this, this is what we're looking forward to, and this is what you can look forward to if, uh, if you go for this, rather than wait and then try to get it out to the community to get feedback at that time. I think that might be, might be a problem.
And Commissioner Church, will you be taking the lead on educating from a town hall perspective, the areas specifically?
Yes, and, uh, and of course, I'm gonna take some backup help. Uh, the fire department's, uh, readily agreed to come out and we're gonna put, it'll be a whole lot different presentation of this. We're gonna have pictures of fire equipment we're gonna have. It's gonna be more oriented to the, to that, uh, to, to this, uh, this audience. So, uh, yes, I will, because most of this unincorporated area is in my personal circle.
And I could certainly echo Commissioner Vaughn's comment about the work, Commissioner Church, to get this before the court. I would certainly like to thank the court because I know that we've aggressively taken strides to update the fleet in the last two fiscal years. I think there's at least three, uh, vehicles that I'm thinking of, as well as the new potential fire station. So I think we're getting there, but certainly to your point, Commissioner Church, it's, it's a long haul and, and we know that we have a long road ahead of us.
Oh, we've done fantastic. We've reduced this age, average age from eighteen years to fifteen, just two years, a year and a half, really. And so, uh, no, we've done a great job. I just think that this is an opportunity for us to speed that up just a little. I would move that we, uh, pass an ordinance to authorize an election to establish a county assistance district in unincorporated Potter County.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Great. I agree with that.
Yeah?
Good work.
And Dave, I will let you get this order signed by Judge Ware, who got this on the actual document. Item number nine, aerial fireworks. To consider an act upon a ban of aerial fireworks during the July fourth fireworks sales season is authorized by three five two point oh five one of the local government code, provided drought conditions exist as defined by that statute. And Dave has stepped out on me, but I know that the court is really dependent on the index, the KDBI index, before we can really take formal action.
Yes.
Achieve, what I'm remembering is five seventy-five or greater, it must be.
That's correct. And right now, our average is one fifty-eight, so we're not gonna come close between now and the fourth of July, if you can test.
And that figure was, uh, the latest they've been moving, as of?
That figure is at nine o'clock this morning. Um, our maximum for the last two weeks has been three thirty-eight, our minimum has been nine. And with the rainfall, we have potential for more. Our average sitting at one fifty-eight, I don't see it fluctuating very much from that range. Even if it comes up, it's not gonna read meet the five seventy-five criteria.
And that's by statute, you can't do anything unless.
That's correct. We have to have that before we can take any action.
I've received some input from citizens that want us to do away with the meeting anyway. So, but by statute.
I have a lot of people that, that share that, that are still in fear of having fires anyway, but, you know, statute, we can't do anything about it. And with that, if I can, Dave, I'd like to say that now would be the perfect time to lift the burn ban for a little while.
And since that's not formally on the agenda, Dave, we cannot take action on that. Is that correct? But Judge Ware can do that.
That's correct. If Judge has the authority in that burn ban order, it's a legitimate issue.
Okay.
So any time trend on that?
For.
Let's get the burn ban, do you want to?
I would wait till we get back into, uh, high fire danger again. I, I don't foresee it for at least a few weeks. So that would give some time for everything and, you know, we continuously monitor the weather, so as soon as we see that trend going back to elevated, to high fire risk, we'll, uh, contact Judge Ware, put it back on and bring it to the very next court. So we can do that.
Okay, item number nine, no action taken.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will pass ten on the executive session and come back to that. And eleven, references in executive session as well. Item twelve, jail, jail report. To your report on the Potter County Detention Center and take any action necessary. The jail count I have is four ninety-five and ninety-four females. Anything you'd like to inform the court on?
No, just our, our females are fluctuating there.
Okay.
Someone in the hospital having a baby right now.
None exported to children?
No.
Okay. Item number thirteen, county insurance items. To consider an act upon any insurance claims, accidents, et cetera, against the county.
Nothing in our court.
No action taken. Item fourteen, to receive any agenda items for the next commissioner's court. I will inform the court that we are expecting the Coca-Cola abatement presentation to the court the next session, July twenty, oh, I'm sorry, June twenty-third. Item ten, executive session, real property. Fire station number three told an executive session to deliberate the purchase exchange or value of real property or deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the county in negotiations with the third party. We will excuse ourselves into executive session at ten oh six and we continue when we are back. We are back in session at ten twenty-one. I'd like to entertain a motion for action necessary from executive session.
I move that we authorize the judge to sign a offer contract for this property for our station, sure. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Church and a second from Judge Ware. All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Commissioner Vaughn, with the audience that's left, would you like to make your announcement about just?
I'm proud of it. I'm glad you ordered me up, uh, the Potter County Sheriff's in, excuse me, in corporate concert with the, our Potter County Fire Department is also having a, a benefit cookout Tuesday, really, on June thirteenth, November AM three PM. And, uh, I know Potter County Sheriff's Office Employee Benefit Board and Potter County Fire Rescue, helping hands, cookout. Join us for hamburgers and hot dogs, five dollars a plate, June thirteenth, November AM three PM, and, uh, at six oh eight South Piers. Contact number is three seven nine twenty-nine hundred. This is for the benefit, all the work that you guys are doing and certainly y'all help that's been required as far as any issues or concern of, of, uh, of, uh, the personnel from the fire department side of the sheriff's office. And there's, uh, and I'm proud that there's, uh, issues that we're also working out, though if, uh, at the time that it's original, I'd like to speak to that, regarding the, uh, fire department personnel, who has been recently taken, uh, deal and, uh, certainly is, I think he's still, you know, he's still in Dallas right now.
Yes. Uh. We've had a member of our department that is, uh, found out he's got a rare form of bone cancer, that, uh, he's been a volunteer on our department for twenty-five years, I believe. He's one of our station captains and, uh, he's been having a lot of medical difficulties that you can imagine. So we were trying to raise money to, uh, help him. He, uh, had to be flown to Dallas for, uh, advanced treatment and, uh, due to conflicts with the insurance company, they wouldn't pay for his air transport, so our department has, uh, has kinda inherited the bill, thinking that we're taking up money to try to root for it. So that's kinda, I think that's kinda the short version of the deal. And we are taking donations at any time to, uh, help with this and the family.
And as the court, excuse me, try and be innovative in, uh, anything outside the box of how we can help, uh, to go ahead and raise those funds. I think it's the excess of about five thousand right now.
Yes, the, the air company did us a really good deal, uh, and it's nice that all the public service agencies could come together and work something out on this, but it's But at the same time, there's still pretty, pretty good sized bill that we're gonna have to try to take care of. And we said from the beginning, we didn't want the family to have to even know this bill existed. So we're trying to just take care of it.
I, I attended the, there are court meetings last week and these guys, certainly, we're not paid for that. And they all volunteered, except for the three families they have. And they're, they're coming out of their own pockets to provide the rest of these issues. So any help that we can do as far as seeking outside of the box, we need someone to help create of helping them obtain that so it will not burden, like all on them.
And just a, just kind of a word that I would like to say, and I say this at our meeting with none of our people, over the last numerous years, it has been really nice to work for a county, a department, an agency, especially now that we're working with the sheriff's department. So I'm pleased that all of the public service agencies and the county take really good care of the people. And it's really remarkable to see that, and I just want to hear everybody's support.
Any other comments from the court? Are done, we will officially close at 10:26 a.m. Thank you and have a good week.